Yeah, I mean, I think I had already crossed the applicant. So I thought we were just going to proceed in that fashion, that you would have to direct testimony.
So Mary Hearn finished direct testimony as architect and will start with you.
That's what we were going to do.
Okay, excellent.
I think perhaps your question would be that you give the public the opportunity, if any of them want to ask a cross-question at the conclusion of the testimony, so we don't have 30 people after the attorney crossing everybody. Because then we're going to have 30 people for everybody to get those asking questions as soon as possible.
Oh, well, I'm in agreement with that. And if I understand correctly, we're going to wait until the end of your testimony, then open up the questions.
Correct.
Excellent. Mr. Kennedy, do you have a question?
Sure.
So is Mary Hearn in the house?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Kennedy, I think I'd like to reopen for just a few moments, Ms. Hearn, or if you would, I wanted to ask her.
Sure. Let me just, uh, Mary, good evening and welcome. And you were sworn at the last hearing, correct?
Correct.
And you recognize you're still under oath?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Mary, I want to first talk to you about the, uh, the design standard to, uh, three and a half stories that you have on your, uh, our actual plans that are reflected on Mr. De Fatto's new sheets. Can you tell the board your theory behind how the, uh, the buildings were designed in the manner of their height, um, the stories, and your rationalization for that approach?
Happy to. Um, so we were talking today earlier, and that's why I'm here, to try to touch upon the, um, not only the height, the 38.5 that's being recommended or being asked for, but also the number of stories. So we all know that you're allowed two and a half stories right in the R75 zone, and that half-story has specific definitions. We're often in front of you talking about how we do comply or don't comply, and then see the variance. In this case, we have a garage under to start. And so what I designed was, with, you know, everybody's help on our team, a two and a half-story house that sits over top of a garage. And there was extra room behind the garage, so I designed a den, knowing people tend to do that, whether you are there or not. So technically, what we have is, is two floors of living. The second level and the third level are living. Garage under, we have about a half a story, a little less, of living on the first floor, the garage level. And then we have a half a story in the attic, like we normally do on our homes. And that, that half-story meets the definition of a half-story. But for this garage floor, we're now at three and a half. And my mindset was, we've designed, we've been involved in quite a few of the redevelopment blocks on Ocean Avenue in, you know, from my history in Belmar. And we were afforded, when we redeveloped those blocks, often 38 and a half feet on the first piece of property closest to the ocean. You actually asked for it on the next piece back and been denied it. So, so my thought was, it wouldn't be the first time that this board, or that the town will have benefited from that taller height. And also, we've asked for three stories in several of those cases simultaneously. So the block between 11th and 12th are three-story, technically three-story homes, um, that have a sloped roof. They're not flat, one is flat, but most of them have a very slight sloped roof. So we have three stories of living. And in that house, we tucked a two-car garage. So that whole block, and then several up between 12th and 13th, they're done the same way. And then down, um, where Belmar Playlands was, we were involved in the redevelopment of that block also. And the same thing happened there. In fact, there, there are the five houses that front the oceanfront, and then three behind on both 15th and 14th, where we were granted that 38 and a half and real three-story. I think it was kind of a, let's give that to the developer and he'll start things, and the town kind of did. Um, so we realized that there's been pullback, when we now ask for that in the next piece of property back. But my thought was, in asking for it here, we weren't starting a new trend. We were asking for, in general, what's been granted on that first piece of property at the oceanfront. So this is not significantly different than what's been asked for and approved and built. And, and further, there are a couple of, um, houses that I've been involved with, and one that I know of that it wasn't. Right on the ocean, the first piece of property at the ocean, where some of the roof is flat. And we've actually taken an elevator up through that roof and built a little enclosure that goes up to about 45 feet in height. So you have several along, at least three, along Ocean Avenue, where the overall height is significantly higher than what we're asking for here. So my feeling was, this was special enough a piece of property. It's at that gateway where we come in. And if we've been doing it, and it was successful, in those other oceanfront blocks, I thought it was worth asking for here. Tied with the height that the White House that we hope to take down is already at 37 and a half. So it's not significantly different than the height that's there. It's not significantly different than the bulk that's been approved and has been built on several redeveloped blocks in Belmar Ocean.
Now, Derek, um, Derek, Mary, um, you had an opportunity to review, uh, the Mazer Engineering Report, did you not?
Yes.
And did you see in there the conclusion of the town's engineer was by asking for 38 and a half feet, uh, was triggering a D-variance?
Correct.
Did you see that?
Yes.
And, um, I'm not going to necessarily ask you for a legal interpretation. That may be something that we debate later on. Uh, but I believe the concept of that from the borough engineer was that once you hit 38.5 feet, that the D-variance is triggered, notwithstanding our history. Um, if in fact that is the case, do you have an inability or an objection lowering by an inch or two or three, um, the roof line under 38.5, so we're not triggering in the eyes of the borough engineer a D-variance request?
No, I have no objection to that.
Uh, did you have an opportunity to, I want to go to the next exhibit, and I think, Mr. Kennedy, we need to mark overlays that I think were prepared.
What, the both of?
Sure. Were prepared by Ms. Hearn's office. Those are the black and white overlays that are upon one of our prior exhibits. So, I-
So let me just, uh, next up is A-19, and what is A-19?
Mary, why don't you pick whether you want the north or south elevation overlay to be that?
We'll go in order of numbers. Right, so A-8 is first. So that would be, what number, I'm sorry?
A-19.
So I'll write that right under it? Do you want a date on that?
No, 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 hold on. No, 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 not at that time.
Where?
Your picture overlays.
Oh, put it right on that?
Yeah, they have not been marked. These boards have been marked.
So put it on this?
Yeah.
Both of them?
Whichever one you want called.
And I'm sorry, just for the record, so we understand it, has that board already been marked?
Yes, it's A-8.
It's A-8, so A was previously marked, and you've done something extra to A-8?
Yes, we have pinned an overlay to A-8. That's new.
Okay. And when you say pinned an overlay, what does that mean?
Well, what we've done is, we've photographed the existing structure and scaled it up to the same scale that my drawing was, to show the comparison of what's there now versus what may be there.
Okay. So then, for the record, we're gonna, Mr. Schreiber, you okay? We've marked this new pinned on, pinned with the overlay as A-19?
Uh, I think we should label the overlays as A-19.
The overlay?
Both?
Because as Mary's hand just hit it, we're going to show what it's like before and after, as to what would be at-
Oh, sorry.
Okay. So, um-
Why don't, why don't we mark the two A overlays A-19, Mr. Kennedy?
Okay, so that's two overlays.
Well, there's two on this board, and that's it.
Correct.
Okay. So A-19?
A-19, so that's two overlays.
I'm using those overlays.
Okay.
And just for the record, Mary, that's prepared by your office?
Correct.
And is there a date on that?
There's not, but they were done today.
Then let's put, uh, 12:20.
Bill gives me a lot of notice.
So that is the, it's called, that's the, uh, the White House?
Correct.
Brought up to the height that you're recommending?
It's shown, we, we, the best of our ability because of skewing and photos, we've blown it up to the same scale that we drew our proposed building at.
So you have that at 38 and a half feet?
Yes. Well, this is at 38 and a half feet, right?
The, the top of the existing overlay is 37.25, is that correct?
Right, right.
Okay, so the existing is that, I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy, the existing enlargement of the White House is at its current height, 37 and a half?
Correct.
In your overlay?
Correct.
Versus the 38 and a half on the new projection?
Correct. And we're going to pass this round, too, yeah.
Okay.
Do you want that to go to the board now?
I'd like to lay the foundation for it, so I think Mr. Fowler did a pretty good job. Mary, the, um, A-19 marked overlays, they are scaled overlays, uh, to scale to 37.25 feet and a size to the best of your ability of what currently exists from the north and the south elevation of the White House, is that correct?
Correct.
And that was done to illustrate the purposes of the board, scale and size from north and south vistas, is that correct?
Correct.
And you've created, created it in a way that each board member, or collectively, can remove the pins, play with the overlay, or look at the overlay and see what's there now versus what they'll have if they approve the project from a massing perspective.
Correct.
Okay. All right, I think that's, uh, all I have, Ms. Hearn.
Thank you.
And leave them there for now?
Sure.
Okay.
Unless the board would like that. Why don't you pass that down to the board?
That's what I hope.
And then what we can do, Mr. Chairman, if you're okay, we can pass it to the men and women in the audience. Sir?
So what are we going now?
Uh, we're going to let that wander on down, and then, uh, Mr. Brodsky is going to cross-examine Mary. And Rick, when you come up, if you want a seat at a desk, we have one here.
Great. Mr. Kennedy, I may have one more document that may assist the, uh, behalf of the surveyors who were, were the height of 37.25. I don't think we've marked that yet.
All right, so we're going to mark that as A-20, and what is A-20?
That's, uh, Fort Kent Lynch Land Surveyors, Surveyors Report, dated July 2018, certifying the top of the roof structure of the listing on a two-second avenue at 37.25 average grade of the upper district.
37.25 foot height, and is that a letter?
Yeah.
Do we have a copy, copies, or do-
We have, we have 15.
Okay, if you would mind, if you can, and we'll hand it to Mr. Brodsky and Milton and Rick.
Ms. Hearn, I think we're, you should still be up here. I think cross-examination is going to happen. And just, or Kennedy, would you like to, to come stand for the, the board?
Sure.
Mr. Merkler, if he may approach, he's going to approach.
Yeah, relationship.
I'm going to present to Ms. Claudia, so this place is by the end of the hearing. That was a document to Ms. Hearn. Do you want me to lay the foundation with Ms. Hearn, Mr. Kennedy, or are you, okay?
Mr. Kennedy, does Mr. Shepherd need to lay the foundation on that letter? Uh, A-20, the Paul Lynch?
Yeah, do you want me to establish, Mary, you mentioned Mr. Lynch, ordinary sort of business, Mr. Kennedy?
I think, I think we're okay.
Is that it? Thank you. All right, that's all I have, Ms. Hearn.
And do we want to open it up to cross-examination, if you want to raise your questions?
Sure, I could, I have some questions for you, Karen.
Sure.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair members of the board, Rick Brodsky. I'm representing the two neighbors who live in the immediate, uh, the immediate west, the Jason Popper family, which we looked through, um, last time we were here. And what I'm going to do is, I'll, I have some questions for Ms. Hearn. I also later, I will, I do have, um, our professional planner who, who we will have testify at the conclusion of the applicant's hearing, uh, applicant's case. Um, good evening, Ms. Hearn.
Hi.
Good to see you again. Um, couple of questions, just on the, on your testimony for tonight, then we'll go back to some of the testimonies from last time. Everyone here, they okay? All right, good. Um, so with regard to the height, so if I understand it correctly, the proposed height, the height that you're proposing, it requires a D-variance, but you've rem, you're amending the application this evening to indicate that you're going to reduce the, the height of the proposed structures in order to not require a D-variance, is that what you were saying?
No, I agreed to reduce it if that's what the applicant wants. We could, we could lower the roof an inch and avoid the D-variance. But I didn't make that decision.
So are we going to decide now whether the applicant wants that or not? I'm not sure what, what's being proposed.
Mr. Kennedy, perhaps, uh, I don't think, to Mr. Brodsky, with the utmost respect, I think, uh, pretty much here before, before the board, uh, over the last dozen years or more, my understanding, and this is really the first review letter that I saw from a borough engineer that indicated when you are at the 10%, you are having D-variance. Um, I think previously, we did not consider that a D-variance. I could be mistaken, but I don't believe we did. Uh, maybe your recollection can be superior, but I think you sat at that table for another year or more, while we had these 38.5, 10% exceeding the, the height without it being called a D-variance. Uh, if in fact that is the interpretation of the borough, and it's going to now be the borough position on height and what triggers a D-variance, because this is the first time I've seen that, is now, um, we will move to lower the roof by three inches so we do not have a D-variance in height to contend with.
If I could just comment on that briefly, uh, height is one of the funny things in the law. Not funny haha, but just funny interesting. Uh, a height variance could be a C-variance or a D-variance, depending on the nature of it. And, uh, the law, in my knowledge, is, is, is pretty clear. If it's, uh, 10 feet or 10% greater than what is allowed, it's a D-variance. So I don't know if it's in an prior review memo, but I think that, that's pretty consistent. So, uh, if it is, uh, the 10% or, um, 10-foot deviation, uh, it is required a D-variance. So it sounds like you were modifying the application so that you do not need that D-variance.
Yes, now that we've ferreted that that move to a D-variance, not only tonight, but henceforth, we will move to amend the height to, Mary, that would be 38.
37.25 feet is what I had?
No, 37.25 exists.
Okay.
We would then amend to 38.3 inches.
Why are you giving 3 when one doesn't?
All right, Mary would like to give one in a little bit.
I'm just sweeping an elevator and-
Did 38?
We're going to move to amend to 38 feet four inches.
38 feet four?
Five inches. 38.5 inches.
So the applicant has agreed to answer the attorney's, have we answered the attorney's question?
You think? We have, but let's make it clear.
Please.
Mary, uh, what, your suggestion that the applicant would abide by would be 38 feet, five inches.
Correct.
One inch less than what was proposed. No, no longer triggering the D-height variance.
So, so, so the basis of the revision is to circumvent the, or to alleviate the necessity of, of requesting another D-variance from this board? We still have a number of others, but of course, you will still need the C-variance for exceeding, uh, the height by just under the 10%.
I'll object to the form of the question, not that I, as I prefer to, but when you said a host of others, you used the term D-variance. You do not have a host of other D-variances.
All right, well, we can, why don't we get into that later on?
No, no, we'll go through it. We've got the U's, we've got the FAR, we've got, so eight others, I guess, if we count a D-variance for each of the six units. Which gets me to my next question. Oh, actually, before I get to that. So we will still, the application will still need a C-variance for exceeding the height by just under the 10%.
That's correct.
And that would apply for all six of the units being proposed.
That's correct.
So you still are going to need six bulk variances for, for, to permit the excessive height for each of the six units proposed.
I don't know that each triggers a variance. There are two buildings.
Are some of, are, is the entirety of all the units in the buildings going to exceed the permitted height?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, and if, well, while you're revising the plan, um, would the applicant consider revising the height of all the units to comply with the zoning ordinance, so we could alleviate the bulk variances as well?
That sounds like a question of the applicant, not the architect.
Well, anyone can answer it.
So I don't know.
Is there anyone who knows? How about, can we ask the applicant? Is that something that would be considered, would be to comply with the height requirements in the Belmar zoning ordinance?
What's the height you recommend, what is the height?
Thirty-five?
Right?
Thirty-five feet and two and a half stories.
So you're asking, will the applicant drop the roof down to 35 feet?
Yeah, I mean-
Are somebody over there to answer that?
Yeah, yeah, I, I thought the architect would want to do that, but if the applicant chooses to answer, that's fine, too.
Can we maybe, um, do you want to get back to that later on? Or you want to continue with Mary and then we can add someone else?
Fine, we can continue, we can continue with Mary, we can come back to that.
Just a point of procedure, Mr. Kennedy. I believe this is cross of Ms. Hearn, not cross of Ms. Hearn and Mr. Merkler. Mr. Merkler's already been crossed.
Yeah, that's right. So it's, it's a fair question that Mr. Brodsky asked, but not for this, uh, he asked it to Mary. Mary, as architect, is not in a position to answer that, so we'll move on and, and Mr. Brodsky will pose it later on down the road.
Okay. Um, let me just get back to some of the other, some of your testimonies that, that was given last time. Um, and I kind of want to go back, um, to, to, to the, to the basic premise that you testified to. And you testified to the fact that, and tell me if this is an accurate characterization, rather than me reading from the, from the transcript. You said that you were given a certain program. And my understanding is that when you, when you talk about a program, meaning you were told, uh, design a project for six units.
That's correct.
Okay. And so, and then there was, uh, and you, you, you took your marching orders, and you designed the best project that you thought you could, getting six units on the program. You als, you also testified that when you did that, you did that before even looking at the zoning ordinance requirements.
You did that intentionally, yes.
And you did that intentionally. And you said, it's a little unusual, uh, but sometimes you do that.
I'll object that that's a, seems to be a statement criticizing her work versus asking her question.
Oh, I'm not criticizing it all. In fact, I complimented her work with this.
Quite unusual in that zone, it did sound like it.
Okay, do you do that with them?
I do that in towns that I know the ordinance very well.
You designed, because you have the ordinance memorized?
Almost.
Okay.
Almost.
So then you knew that, you knew that this program was not going to comply with, with any of the requirements in the zoning ordinance that applied to this property?
No, that's not true.
Okay.
I hadn't designed it yet. I don't know what I comply with until I design-
No, I'm talking about after you designed it, after you were giving your program, you designed a project consisting of six units, um, before you looked at the zoning, then ultimately you looked at the zoning. So after you designed the project, you realized you didn't, the project didn't comply, the design didn't comply with any of the zoning requirements.
Not any of the zoning ordinances.
Oh.
We do comply in some respects.
Okay. Um, I know we comply with lot size, but I'm not aware of any others, but we can come back to that.
Fair enough.
We can come back to that. I just am trying to figure out, um, if you were given a program that said, design a project that had five units, would we have a more compliant development?
Depends how big they are.
Same size as was being proposed?
Uh, probably yes.
Okay, I mean, clearly, the parking requirement would go down. Lot coverage, building coverage, FAR. All of those would be reduced.
That's true.
Parking made or whatever. The, the necessity of the variance performance. Now, would the same hold true for four units?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
And of course, it certainly would hold true for what's permitted in a zone, which is a single-family.
If they're all the same size, yes.
All the same size. And you could even get a bigger unit if you did a compliant single-family home.
Haven't gone through that, but that would make sense.
Okay, I'm just assuming, not going to hold you to that. And you talked about also last time, you talked about a couple of things that, that you considered to be important, one of which was parking. And you testified, um, that you tried your best, given the program, to provide as much parking as, as, as you could on the site for the six units. Still need a variance, but only two spaces shot on that particular variance. Although, I don't recall, I think you testified that we did lose a number of on-street parking spaces, uh, based on the curb cover. Do you remember how many?
I think it was five.
Okay. Um, would you say that the variances that are necessary at the next year of this application for, let's, let's go through just a couple of them, because I recognize that parking is certainly important, but there are, you know, all the variances are, are important, do you agree?
Some are more important than others in this town.
Okay, so is FAR important?
Yep.
So here, here, the, um, application that's before the board poses an FAR of 117%, where 50 is required, 50 is permitted. And so, when you say the FAR limitations are important, why are they important? What's the intent behind FAR limitations?
Bulk.
Bulk. Bulk meaning density?
Meaning bulk.
Meaning-
Size.
Size.
Bulk.
Size, okay. And you, uh, and certainly, we could reduce that, probably can't comply, but we could bring that 117% number down as we reduce number of units. Now, the- Now, the, you also talked about, and I'm, I'm just looking for, if I could, just a site plan, maybe this one, too, if I could. So-
Rick, was that previously worn?
I don't know.
And is that the new one?
It's a new one.
I just picked it up off the floor. Do we need to mark the new one?
Yes, let's mark the new one.
Rick, you want me to do it?
Wait a minute, is that what we marked earlier as A seventeen? Is that, um-
You are correct.
A seventeen, okay.
Mark it again, or leave it?
Sure, you may as well just mark it again, A seventeen.
Great.
And just for the record, that's previously been given to the board.
Correct.
Got it.
Right, revision of A twelve ten eighteen.
Yes.
So, you're, you're aware that my clients own the, live in the properties immediately adjacent to West?
Yes.
And you talked about, one of the other things that was important was to, um, protect as much light air and open space as you could with regard to those immediately adjacent neighbors.
Well, I think what I said was, we left what is normally a side setback distance because it acts like a side setback.
But by definition, it's a rear setback. And my clients' rear yards are there, are, are immediately adjacent to their-
Their side yards, no, their side yards are there.
Side yard and their backyard, right?
If they face west, their backyard would be there.
Got it.
Their side yard is there.
But from a practical matter, when they sit in their backyard, that's where they are.
If a house was, if only one house was built and it faced River Avenue, it would only be five feet off that property line.
That's right. And so, that five feet that you have here, um, you indicated, um, that, that, you did that intentionally in order to give those property owners as much light air and open space as you could, given the program that was given to you.
Again, I think you're putting words in my mouth. I didn't say light air and space. I said, "I set a setback at what I normally set on a side yard."
Okay, and, but what is the side yard setback requirement?
There is no side yard setback on this lot.
In, in, I'm talking about in the, in-
Five feet.
Five feet. There's no side yard setback here because this, because it's a corner lot, right? We've got a rear yard there.
I think I'll object to the form of the question. I think it's a triangle lot.
Yeah, it's a very unique-
Which requires something to be designated that I think Mr. Brodsky made out as a rear yard setback.
Okay, so that's, so, so that's, this is by definition, a rear yard?
For that very unique lot, yes.
For this lot?
Yep.
And then what is the required rear yard setback under the ordinance?
Forty feet.
Okay. And so, i- in order to comply with the ordinance, right, you would have to move a building, you'd have to design and move a building forty feet over.
Mm-hmm. It's a hardship.
Well, then, why do you ask?
Ask me, it's a hardship.
Well, um, wouldn't you be able to move the building off, the structures off of that, further off that property line if you reduced the number of units?
Yes.
Okay, would you be able to remove, to, to move the building off the property line if you built a compliant single-family home?
Yes.
Okay. Now, when we're talking about five feet, right, that's this long?
That's our normal setback.
That's about five feet.
And that's what they have on their side.
So, and, but, in addition, now, that's not the only variance you're seeking here, right? You're seeking a, a multitude of variances, of which this is just one.
That's true.
And so, is that an indication to you that the property is being overbuilt?
Nope.
Now, what about the lot coverage? So, the lot coverage, what's proposed is sixty percent?
I don't know. Sixty point two percent.
Sixty point two percent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And forty percent is permitted in the zone.
Correct.
So, your lot coverage exceeds that which is permitted by, I don't know, what's the name, fifty percent, is that what? Is that a significant variance in your?
Yes.
What about the building?
The same variance we've been granted several times in this town.
But not for this property?
Not for this property.
What about the building coverage? So, if the building coverage, you're proposing fifty-two point four percent, twenty percent is permitted.
Right.
Again, not an indication to you that six units may be too much?
Not for that.
Could, could, would the building coverage and lot coverage-
Yeah.
I want to talk also about the threshold D-variants that is necessary here, which is the number of units, right? There's, single unit is permitted by the zone, in the zone, in the zone, right?
Right.
And you're proposing six. Is that a significant variance in your mind?
From that site, no.
Excuse me, what, not to interrupt you, but, Mr. Kennedy, isn't, isn't Mrs. Hearn asked to do what she was told? She was asked to design a six-unit building. So, I don't understand why we're getting all this cross-examination when she did what she was asked to do.
Right, and then now-
She would be directed towards the applicant.
Or, or the applicant's planner, so, but, so, Mr. Brodsky here has some questions for, for Mary in terms of your architectural testimony. So, I think he's reading your, your comments, but, you know, we'll, we'll let him go on, but recognizing that some of those concerns are maybe going to be for his planner and his, his cross-examination of, of the applicant's.
Yeah.
I apologize, I was interrupting, but- Not at all. I'm not criticizing Ms. Hearn at all. All I'm doing is trying to get at, I'm just trying to establish that she was given a pretty tough job, which is to fit six units on a property that's owned for one.
You're going to object.
And I understand that, I understand that. But we, as, and to answer your question, we did speak about that with the applicant last time. He did testify that it was basically driven by money, that the owner had to get a certain amount of money, and, which means you need a certain amount of units.
I understand, but I think the testimony does confirm that. Frank, Mr. Kennedy, would you like to respond to this?
Yes.
So, Ms. Hearn, I just have to ask you just a couple more questions, and then we'll move on. Wouldn't it be a problem, in your opinion, wouldn't it be a problem if every property owner decided that they, he or she need not comply with the borough zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Let me ask you another question. Inasmuch as, and, and you may be right, there may be some provisions of the ordinance that you could comply with, I haven't found them yet, um, but-
From your setback?
But, oh, there may be a setback, right?
Or setback or setback.
Yeah, yeah, there are a few bolts, there are a few bolt variances, bolt requirements that we comply with. I forgot the number that we don't comply with. But here's my question. We've identified, is it fair to say, a significant number of variances associated with this application? And those variances, some of them are not minor, they're pretty significant.
That's true.
At what point, then, does what is being requested amount to a request to change the zone?
I don't know, I'm an architect.
Okay.
But I can tell you that-
I think he calls for a legal conclusion, Mr. Kennedy, that Mr. Brodsky's asking of Mary, and she doesn't have, have training or the capacity to answer that question.
Fair enough. Ms. Hearn, have you ever been involved with a request for a zone change in this town or any town?
No, I don't think so.
Was, um, as part of your program, did anyone ever request that, uh, you to consider or give advice as to whether or not a request for a zone change would be in order?
No, no. I usually get involved after that's done.
Fair enough, fair enough. So, a revised plan was submitted, and, um, I guess it changed a little bit. Was that you, or should I talk to the end?
No.
Going back to this, this five-foot area here, adjacent to my client's property, I see these, these little squares here. It says air conditioner. So, those are the air conditioning units, there's eight of them there?
Correct.
And would those be, how far off the property line would the eight air conditioning units be?
Five and a half feet.
Okay.
They're required to be five feet.
Required to be five. And we've got eight of them there at five and a half feet. And you, and I don't see it on this plan, but am I correct, there were doors back here, too? So, are those the rear doors or the front doors?
Rear.
Rear, and there are front doors, people access-
Garage doors there. There's front door coming in off of second and one off of River. You have to come through the garages on those roads and-
Got it. So, within, so with this five-foot setback here, you've got the eight air conditioning units, um, and you've got four rear doors.
Yeah, it's just a way to get to that alley.
It's a way to get to the alley. And, and, and in your opinion, that's okay to be within five feet of the property line?
It's common in Bellmar.
Okay. And of course, if you had less units, you could move it over, and the air conditioning units could move over and everything. What sort of sound attenuation are you proposing for those eight units?
I'm not proposing any, they're actually quite quiet today.
Well, hey, it's cold out. You mean, you mean current time? Okay. So, when you're, so, you're saying that the eight units wouldn't be an issue for the neighbors?
I believe that was landscaping planned, but I did not design it.
Okay, and no sound attenuation there? Is there any reason, what, can you tell us why you chose to put the eight air conditioning units there?
Well, typically, they go outside the building.
Correct.
Footprint. I tucked them up underneath so that they were less obvious.
Would there be another alternative for the placement of air conditioning units that wouldn't be, wouldn't result in eight of them being within five feet of the property line?
It, it would, it would trigger another variance if you put them in a front yard. They are allowed on the roof, but they're not as attractive and, and not as desirable for ownership.
May not be for ownership, but from the, from the perspective of the neighbors-
They may not be for the neighbors from their upper levels either, though. I think they're actually in the best place for the neighbors.
I mean, I can tell you my clients do not like the idea that we need air conditioning in their backyard.
Are the air conditioning units in their backyard?
I don't know where they are, but they're not, uh, they're there now, they're for a single-family permitted use, as opposed to something that requires the old D-variants and old variances, that being, so, it's a little different scenario.
We're not seeking a variance for those.
No, 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 I'm talking about the, what is it? Seventeen other variances, that, that I'm talking about. Now, speaking of those, well, if you count, if you count the D-variants and the height variants for, for each of the units, we get up to over that.
But you don't refer to the units, that's, that's my point.
For each of the two, for each of the two. Well, we, whatever the number is, I, I mean-
What is the number?
A variant, is it?
Yes.
That's the engineer, I just designed it.
Do we wait for the engineer to ask?
Sorry.
Who's the engineer?
I have third question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Okay, when you're up, I'm going to answer that question.
Do, do you want me to answer?
No.
I can count, I can count if you like. We're in double figures, that's for sure.
Count existing ones.
No, uh, oh, trash and pickup, would that be you, or should I speak to?
That's the applicant.
Okay, should be applicant or the engineer?
Or the engineer.
No further questions, Mr. Brodsky. Beautiful design.
Thank you.
Just not for this part.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky.
I'll refer to there are.
Tim Middleton, if you have any-
I, I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Middleton.
Thank you.
Then you're going to public it all later, but not now, of, of questions.
Correct.
Mr. DeFalco will be my next question.
Okay, good evening, Mr. DeFalco, who can just take the name and, uh, who can name an address, please?
DeFalco, D I F O L C O.
D I F O L C O, okay.
Address forty-nine, Chicago, P. Street, and, and local street.
And you are testifying tonight in your capacity as?
Engineer and later on, planner.
Okay, engineer and planner, so, leading and welcome. Do you swear that the information and test funding you're about to provide will trip to best knowledge to help you guide?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. DeFalco, we have a pretty full house, we have a work reporter by the director, so I'd like you to identify the basis of your engineering, uh, education, some work history, your experience, number of times you've testified for boards, and this Bellmar Board has tested Bellmar planning. Take your time.
Certainly. I'm a licensed engineer since nineteen seventy-seven, a licensed planner since nineteen eighty-two, I believe. I own JKR Engineering since nineteen eighty-eight. We are a private engineering firm that was subdivision of site and private clients in Monmouth and Millsix County primarily. I've assisted prior before this board dozens and dozens of times, as well as most municipalities between the Highlands and Stafford Township, pretty much on the coast, as far west as Hamilton, near Trenton, and, uh, we have run numerous projects of this nature. We own both the design of the site, as well as the stormwatering island, center of the environment, and, uh, in the past, I have worked as a municipal engineer for TNF Associates, where I was a plentywood engineer for Billtown Township and Mama Beach, and also for CME Associates, and worked as the Manalacan County Plentywood Engineer.
I'd like for Mr. DeFalco as an expert in engineering.
And Mr. Chairman, before we accept, could we just, for the record, ask Mr. Middleton and Mr. Brodsky if they have any confidence regarding, uh, concerns regarding the qualifications?
I have no confidence.
Okay. Thank you. I will certainly accept those credentials. Thank you, Mr. DeFalco.
Thank you. Mr. DeFalco, I'm going to ask you to first address, if you will, the existing site, what is there upon, its demographic from a zoning criteria, thus you know about, and the maintenance stage, things of that nature, to establish what the baseline of the property is that we're looking to redevelop. Not, I think this is your first, the first one.
All right, so, let me start by saying that the initial plan that was submitted to the board, I did not testify on it. The first hearing, you heard from the architect and Mr. Murkler, I didn't get to testify, but I'm testifying now under revisions of the plan, which was a result of a client request, and when we get to the site plan, I'll describe what that changed, what changed. But to answer Mr. Schreiber's first question, I'll describe the property in store from the beginning. So, a site is lot number one, Watts Hand, it is a triangular-shaped property on River Avenue and Second Avenue, which is the first dwelling in that location from the beach, the first dwelling west of the beach. The, the site is uniquely that it has two road frontages and one rear yard, which has been described as a westerly line. The borough ordinance describes that when you have an irregularly shaped lot, triangular would classify as irregular shape, at least one of the yards must be designated as a rear yard. If this was a through lot, similar to the adjacent lot to the west, it would have two side yards and not a rear yard. So, our lot has two, two front yards and one rear yard, by ordinance.
I'm sorry, your lot has what, eight yards?
Two front yards and one rear yard. And the requested variance on the chart on sheet one describes- And requested variance, on the chart on sheet one, describes that we are inherent with the front yard setback along River Avenue, and with the rear yard setback to the west. Along Second Avenue, we are matching the existing front setback of the adjacent dwelling. And the ordinance has provisions that we can, in fact, line up with the dwelling next to us. I believe it's nineteen feet, nine inches, something close to that. So we're not at the twenty-foot setback on Second Avenue, but we're at the same setback as the adjacent home to the west. With regard to the zone criteria for the R-75 zone, this is considered a corner lot in the zone, which requires nine thousand square feet of lot area, and Lot One has fifteen thousand and twenty-five square feet, complying with the size requirements for the R-75 zone, so a variance is not required for that. The lot frontage on the corner lot is sixty feet, and we have in excess of four hundred feet of frontage because of the two road frontages, and no variance is required for frontage. The allowable building coverage for a fifteen thousand square foot lot in the zone is twenty percent. The existing lot, which houses the White House Hotel, has a thirty-five percent existing building coverage, exceeding the maximum of twenty percent in the zone. So there is an existing non-conformity as regards to building coverage. The proposed building coverage is fifty-two point four percent, again, a variance from the twenty percent allowable. Lot coverage, impervious coverage, maximum for a fifteen thousand square foot lot, is forty percent. And I mention you the area of the lot, because the borough has a schedule of, depending on the lot size, in the slightest scale of impervious coverage, building coverage, and floor area ratios. The smaller the lot, the larger you're allowed to increase the percentages. In our case, we're the top of the chart with the largest spot, fifteen thousand per feet, the top line of the schedule, and that's the numbers I'm referring to, that's what is permitted in the zone. Small lots could have had a larger building coverage. So we're at lot coverage, maximum is forty percent. Existing Lot One has a forty-seven percent impervious coverage.
By forty?
Forty-seven, which exceeds the allowable forty percent of the zone. Proposed is sixty percent. Again, it exceeds the maximum lot coverage impervious area. But the floor area ratio maximum for that lot is fifty percent. Existing Lot One has a fifty-eight point seven percent floor area ratio, which exceeds the allowable. The proposed floor area ratio is one hundred and seventeen percent, again triggering the variance. On-site parking provided is zero, there is no parking on the White House Hotel property. We are proposing twelve onsite spaces, two, three units, where fourteen, according to our SIS, is required. We are asking for a variance for twelve, where fourteen spaces are required. The front yard setback minimum in the zone is twenty feet. The existing lot has a nineteen-foot setback, which is a variance condition. The proposed lot has a long river, a five-foot setback from River Avenue. However, on Second Avenue, we align with the nineteen-foot existing condition. The front porch setback has a twelve-foot minimum, since the borough allows an eight-foot projection into the front yard setback. The existing structure is set back ten point one feet from the right-of-way line to the porch, that is a variance condition. The front porch setback is five feet, again, along River Avenue. The rear yard setback to this lot is forty feet. Lot One, the existing White House Hotel, is sitting on the rear setback line at a zero-foot setback. It is on the line, there is no setback. We are proposing five feet, actually five point five feet, for your left-hand side to the rear setback, again, a variance condition. Since the lot has two front yards and one rear yard, there are no side yards, and there are no total side yard requirements. The building height maximum for this zone is thirty-five feet and two and a half stories. The existing White House Hotel is thirty-seven point two five feet, which exceeds the height restriction, and it is two and a half stories high. The proposed dwelling, with revision made today, is thirty-eight feet, five inches, and three and a half stories high, which includes a garage at the lowest level, and that is a variance condition. The borough has a requirement called lot shape minimum, where you can place a circle within the setbacks of the property, and how large a circle can you fit within the setbacks. Where thirty feet is required, existing condition allows only a twenty-four foot circle, which is a variance condition. And since the lot determines that shape, that plant work fee continues with proposal, again, a variance condition. We're not, we are not proposing any accessory structures, so there are no side yards, rear yards, or park issues, both to accessory structures. The proposal is to demolish the house, the White House Hotel, which has thirty-four bedrooms and no onsite parking, and reading from the general notes on sheet one. It's proposed to construct two condominium buildings containing a total of six units and seventeen bedrooms, which is half the amount of bedrooms that exist today, and provide twelve onsite garage parking spaces, where no parking today is onsite. The property is serviced by a total sewer, water, electric, phone, and gas, and all new utilities will be placed underground. We are located in a flood zone X, an area of minimal flooding, according to the PMA map dated 2012.
So what's the abbreviated version?
We, we need... It looks like we need ten variances of the bulk variances, and the use variance to allow the condominium, multifamily use, let's say.
Six units?
Six units versus the thirty-four bedrooms, yes, sir. Don't get caught up.
Now, I'd like you...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. DeFalco, before we skip into the balance of your sheet, I'd like you to go to the tax map, that is up to the right, or reference to tax map, so you can put this lot in context of what surrounds it. You heard the cross-examination by Mr. Brodsky and Ms. Hearn, correct?
I did.
So if, if you would go to the tax map and...
Mr. Schreiber, did we mark that already?
Yes.
I think we have.
A-ten.
A-ten, great.
And would you inform the board as to what each color denominates?
You know what, and why don't you do this, I'm sorry, Mr. DeFalco, if you could just stand up for a moment and just sort of show that to the audience, and just then, so that they can get an idea of what, what you're saying?
This is a copy of the tax map, and north is up, the ocean is in blue on the right, on the left side of it as you're looking at it. The site is the triangular yellow.
And maybe you want, maybe do that twice or something for the, for the board members?
Yeah, let me just go back there maybe.
Does the yellow denominate condominiums and apartments within two, two blocks north and south, or three blocks north and south, and a block and a half?
Let me start again. So our site is this triangular parcel at the corner of River and Second. The yellow is condominium and apartment use. The yellow is predominantly surrounding the site. The purple designates a single-family use, purple. The red is a multifamily use. So those colors designate what uses are on the site, and cases to the site.
So for the record, describe in detail, not just show the picture, from detail, describe the, let's say, the intensity of uses around this lot.
I'm gonna read through my notes, so this way I won't mess up the numbers.
The abbreviated version.
As quickly as I can, sir, yes. The surrounding areas consist of mainly condominium units and apartment units, a few single-family homes. Multifamily housing is the norm, not the exception within this portion of the R-75 zone and immediate area. Directly across Second Avenue to the south, that would be to the south, right here? Directly across Second Avenue to the south are the twenty-four unit Lamar Gardens condominiums on Lot Two, Block Twenty.
I'm sorry, twenty-four unit Lamar Gardens condominium.
Thank you. Lot Two, Block Twenty. A lot area of thirty thousand square feet, at a density of thirty-five units per acre.
I'm sorry, the density was what?
Thirty-five units per acre.
Thank you.
Immediately west of Lamar are the Felaville Court condominiums, containing fifteen units on Lot Four and Five, an area of thirty thousand square feet, at a density of thirty-three units per acre. South of this lies Chateau Gardens, containing thirty-six units on Lot Nine, a one-acre site providing a density of thirty-three units per acre. North of the site on First Avenue and Ocean Avenue are the North Wind condominiums.
I'm sorry, the north what?
North Wind, that is. Containing twenty-eight units on Lot Three, Block Two. The lot area is twenty-nine thousand seven hundred square feet, at a density of forty-one units per acre. Immediately west of the River Ridge Apartments, on three point one acres, containing one hundred and thirty-eight units, providing a density of forty-five units per acre. The existing density at the hotel, thirty-four units on point three four acres, ninety-nine units per acre. The building heights of the area vary, with most structures two and three stories in height, ranging from twenty-four feet to forty feet. And as Ms. Hearn testified, to along Ocean Avenue, homes of thirty-eight and a half feet high are typical. The proposed density, six units on fifteen thousand square foot lot, is eighteen units per acre. So eighteen units per acre for us.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
Eighteen units per acre.
Connect. You just throw it into the second.
The proposed density, six units.
You said eighteen acre, eighteen for us.
Eighteen units.
Right.
So, surrounding our site, thirty-five units an acre, thirty-three units an acre, thirty-three units an acre, forty-one units an acre, forty-five units an acre, we're at eighteen. So I would say we are less dense in proximity area by factor. Was that it? That's the description of this map, of what it is.
Basically, and I apologize for asking this, but basically what you're saying is, there are more multifamily units than single-family homes in that map depiction?
Yes, within approximately to our side, yes.
Continue.
I apologize for interrupting.
Continue, Mr. DeFalco. The exhibit to the left, I think, you may just identify whether that's a consistent aerial depicting the area from a Google search map.
Yes, yes, so the exhibit...
And I'm sorry, if you can just, is that marked?
A left, A left, thank you. Is a, is an aerial photo, I'm assuming it's a Google Earth photo, which again, shows the property, the triangular lot of the White House on the corner, single-family, adjacent, and then across the street, condominium, condominium to the south, condominium to the north, apartment complex to the north. That's the same as the yellow on the tax map. And at the end, even beyond the block across Second, I'm sorry, across A Street, which I didn't describe, there are additional condominiums along Second, on the, on the west side of A. So similar densities exist at the three corners where Second and, and A cross.
The triangle above, we're north of our property, that's a borough piece of property that's essentially a vista gateway into the town?
Correct. This parcel is a triangular open space area, which is a borough apartment. And that white line that you see across the green, that's the Belmore, it's the word Belmore, as you come across the bridge, you see that word?
And the vista one would see, when they would come across the bridge, would be this bottom image of the overlay, as the vista of Belmore currently exists, is that correct?
Can we see that one, please? He said the number of variances, thank you.
Oh, ten?
Yes. I thought it was nine.
Okay, let's go back to your site plan. Take us thoroughly, but succinctly, through your site plan.
Page two of the site plan is an existing condition plan, which shows the location of the White House. It shows the White House sitting on the rear setback line, which is the westerly line. It shows the amount of impervious areas, which shows that there is no onsite parking, and it shows the photography of the ground, which raises an elevation from sixteen to fifteen, and since that, fourteen, about a two-foot rise towards the center. There is curbing and sidewalk on the two street frontages, and parking along both Second Avenue and River Avenue. On River Avenue, there are approximately forty-eight spaces marked by parking stripes that exist at the frontage and opposite the frontage along River, which is adjacent to the park. So there are forty-eight parking spaces right to the north of the site, in the street, that are marked. And there are seven or eight spaces along Second.
I'm sorry, just give me those numbers again, seven or eight spaces along Second?
Along Second Avenue.
And what was the first number?
Forty-eight.
Along River Avenue, thank you.
Continue with your site plan. I'd like to take you through the site plan, and give us range, heard cuts, proposals for sidewalks, take us right through.
And before I leave page two, at the request of the borough engineer, we have a four-inch soil test on the site, approximately halfway down River Avenue, and the water cable would determine to be a hundred and thirteen inches below surface, so that's almost nine tent feet below surface. That's for later information, we get it to the dream. Next, page three is the site layout plan, which reflects the proposal of two structures, one with four units, that's in the west of the... Next, page three is the site layout plan, which reflects the proposal of two structures, one with four units, that's the West Philly Building, and only 22 units, that's the East Philly Building. The West Philly Building is rectangular, the East Philly Building is trapezoidal in shape. The setbacks proposed are depicted on the plan. Along Second Avenue, the four-unit building is 19.7 feet setback, as well as the two-unit building at the same setback. Along River Avenue, we have a proposed five-and-a-half-foot setback on the larger building, the West Philly Building, and a five-foot setback on the smaller building, the trapezoidal-shaped building. The setback along River was chosen to be diminished as across the street, there is an open space park, no adjacent across-street dwellings and open space. The entire park is open, no structures. We chose to reduce setbacks where it has the least impact on adjacent uses. To the west, we are proposing a five-and-a-half-foot setback from the property line. Presently, as on page two, shows the existing White House Hotel is sitting on the property line with no setback. In addition to the setback from the property line, we are proposing a six-foot-high solid line fence along the property line to buffer the first floor and the air conditioning units from, from the ground level on the adjacent residential lots. Between the two buildings, we have a proposed one-way driveway, which, that's one of the amendments that was made to the plan. The original plan had a two-way driveway, but the applicant, being aware that a southerly traveling vehicle may shine headlights on the residential units that are on Second Avenue, chose to make a driveway one-way north so that any headlight flare would be dissipated at the borough's park, do not shine into the adjacent dwelling. In doing so, we reduced the width of the entrance and exit at the apron to 18 feet. Between the buildings, we have 29 feet from garage door to garage door, and a 20-foot carway for one-way traffic. As we enter the River Avenue curb line with our driveway, it causes the elimination of four parking spaces along River Avenue to accommodate the curb cuts. As we enter the site from Second Avenue, eliminate two parking spaces to provide for the 18-foot wide curb cut. So in total, there are six existing parking spaces being eliminated by these curb cuts, one for Second Avenue and one for River Avenue. We are proposing a sidewalk along both side frontages and paper sidewalks from the front porches out to the municipal sidewalk. The driveway is proposed as a paper driveway. And concrete aprons are proposed between the curb and sidewalk. There is a new handicap depression proposed at the point of River and Second, where the curb is brought slowed down to meet the pavement. So sheet, sheet three has been described with two new buildings, a paper driveway, new sidewalks, new curbs, and the elimination of six parking stalls. And page four is called the grading and utility plan. And on page four, it says how the, the land was spoken and what it proposes relative to storm drainage and utility connections. So there is an existing downturn sewer line in Second Avenue, and both buildings will connect to that existing facility, as well as water service and gas service. Electric service will come from the existing line in River Avenue, where the pole is located at the West Philly property line where it meets Curb Avenue. The site has a high point pretty much in the center of the trapezoidal building on the driveway, and the flow is in both directions from the high point out to existing sidewalk elevation. We are exceeding the lot impervious coverage. Being aware of that, we mitigate that by installing an underground trench drain and stone bed around that. We calculated that the amount of existing runoff will not be exceeded after the installation of an underground storm collection system. The soil board that was mentioned on sheet two, at the request of the Borough Engineer, shows that the bottom of the stone trench is more than two feet above the seasonal water table, which affords the drain to operate properly. It will collect water from the site. And at the end of each of the pipes, there is a trench drain. In the event that the pipe has reached capacity, the overflow will flow down the driveway and out to both Second Avenue and Curb Avenue at a rate that's equal to the present rate of runoff and not exceed the existing condition of storm work, volume or runoff. We are matching grade along the sidewalk, and we are matching grade along the neighboring properties to the west. There is a retaining wall to elevate the rear yards where the air conditioning units are, approximately two feet above certain ground level. And that wall is located within our property, does not affect the grading on the adjacent property, which drains out towards both Second Avenue and River Avenue. And as I stated before, presently, the White House Hotel is sitting on the property line, so the structure today is on the property line. We're closing off a few inches, building a two-foot-high wall, and then we give a setback to the structure. On the edge of that wall is a six-foot-high fence. We have several service walks from the existing sidewalk out to the front steps of the individual units. And there are several steps involved. Today, there are steps involved. If you go through White House today, as you leave the public sidewalk into the site, we go up two or three steps. That's the inconditioned wall is in the proposed condition, we'll walk. Out of the right way, another few steps to get to the ground level where we're putting the wall. Utility sheet.
Which sheet includes how you're going to service with electric, water cable? How are they done underground at the site?
Page five is soil erosion sheet, we will comply with the full soil district. Standard details on this, limited disturbance, stove management pads, don't produce any kind of cracking of mud from trucks onto the public street. Access is proposed from River Avenue. Sheet six is a landscaping plan, which shows proposed treatment around the buildings. There are plantings around the existing monuments, they are shrubs. There is a six-foot fence against the back property line, which is higher than the shrub. We have shade trees along the street. And some decorative grasses and plantings around the buildings that are powered to the ocean atmosphere environment of the salt, water and salt.
Look what is happening with existing sidewalks, existing curb lines. Around, around the site. Is there any proposal that you're aware of regarding those?
Yes, we're putting in the new sidewalk infilling. Placing this there. Sheet seven, the last sheet, into the detail sheet, the construction details, that's below the borough.
At this juncture, I'd like you to address the engineer's report from an engineering perspective, and then I'm going to take you into testimony as a planner. Here you go, right on.
Letter dated December 18th, from Azer, who consulted.
All right, and that was A-18 Avenue, correct?
I believe you're correct.
And that's the most recent review letter, yeah, sent.
Please address the points contained, both in the December 18th, 18 letter, and any that might carry over as any banking, take a glance at October 18th, as there may, there may have been some things that were requested in the original, for the original.
I'm going to start with December 18th letter. On page three, at the bottom, is a general comment category. Number one, Mary Hearn, the described architectural plans. Number two, whether there'll be homeowners association, Mr. Dr. Clay, and to that in some. Number three, the site in flood zone X, which I described.
When you talk about the flood zone, outstanding flood zone X, were you familiar with the damage that's gone through the Delmont Shoreline on, I believe it's October 23, 2012, as the ocean affects, sand affects, up and down the streets of the borough from, out of Hurricane, but a superstorm?
Yes, sir.
Describe for the board your recollection or knowledge of the devastating effects that superstorm had on the first few blocks of Ocean Avenue.
I remember visiting the site of, we've done many projects, I wanted to see how they fared in the storm. I remember coming after the storm, a few days after, and there was obviously displacement of, the walk, the walk had been moved a couple hundred feet down the road into some buildings. Sand was piled up halfway down the block towards A Street, and it was quite a sight to see. There was technically no hurricane, but the elevation and the wave height and the wind, all things that you wouldn't see on a map, that the hundred-year storm, in that case, I believe was exceeded, even though it wasn't registered as a hurricane.
Excuse me, not to catch your eye, but we're discussing a six-unit building, we're talking about a storm. Am I missing something? Is there some evidence here?
Yes, there is. So what we're doing is, we're putting our garages on the first floor. As Hearn testified to, typically have a two-and-a-half-story footprint of building in Belmore. We're taking that two-and-a-half-foot footprint, putting it on top of the garage, using the first floor as a safety measure against flooding in the future, against hurricanes, against damages.
You're making this in a hurricane city?
Our request for a height variance, even though the sea variance now needs justification. One of the justifications is, we're elevating the structure, similar to what's being done in the Seaport Village Zone, where it's not a variance to do what we want to do here. So in that part of town, it's almost mandatory to have underground parking, high-grade parking rather, and build above. We're doing it here as a precaution, knowing that the ocean is not going to say, okay, we're not going to come back again. The ocean's going to come back, we want to be ready for it. So we're elevating our structure, and part of that elevation then variants with the height elevation. So we're seeing a variance in part of the structure that's going out, hopefully with flooding. We're aware of that, we're taking it into account in other time. So this variance is one of the things.
So, Mr. DeFalco, take us to, from a, well, take us, complete your engineering review of the engineering documents, and tell whether you will conform with the request of the Borough Engineer, or if he has requests in the engineering.
Phil, can you say this property was in the flood zone?
No.
This is not. It's not in the flood zone?
No.
But we're making precautions against pending future storms.
How about number four, the site driveway?
A comment four from the engineer talks about sites since that the driveway has traces of landscaping and how it be maintained. So landscaping will be maintained at a height that is not obstructing to visibility. And note these conditions, the avenue and the bridge, will make sure there's no large roads that would block the visibility of anyone needing the site on the river. Second, Second Avenue is an entrance only, but the age of the river will be properly trimmed and maintained to have a clear line of sight.
How about the comment, how we should have a draft of the site?
Each garage will have room for the homeowner's trash can. And on pickup day, they will be placed outside, and I believe you spoke less than about private collection?
Yes.
So this private collector will come and take the trash from each of the sets' units and load it into the truck and be on his way. There will be no dumpster outside the building, will be individual trash cans and recycling areas inside the garage. Each resident.
Number eight, I think, is a concern for off-site spillage of lighting.
Right. There are no street lights proposed, there are no parking lots proposed. This is a driveway between units, and at the face of each unit, there will be building-mounted garage lights on the sides of each door, as well as any house, that light up the area immediately outside the garage door. There will be no lights on the west side of the building to spill onto the adjacent residential lots, and no floodlights or streetlights proposed along the driveway. The mechanical equipment, comment number nine, is going to be behind the units at gray level, screened by the landscaping and the six-foot-high fence. And comment 10, ventilation of the garage. I don't believe there is a ventilation issue at the single garage. Some of the other sites we've done are 20-car or 60-car parking garage, which require ventilation. I believe the code does not require anything special in these projects, relatively in addition. Local approvals, yes, Mall County Planning Board needs approval of that plan, as well as approval of Soil District on the soil. Look at the old letter, hold it. I forget if I did not mention in the regional file, the Florida's technical detail and his request for additional permission.
All right, I'd like you to put on your planner hat now. All right, I'd like you to put on your planner hat now, and address the project from a planner's review perspective in light of a request of use variance and a far variance as well as some of your principal discussions. And then I'd like you to discuss, from your perspective, an evaluation of special reasons and next, any negative criteria or impact whether they are substantial. Next off, I'm going to open that up to you, from a planning perspective.
And I'm going to refer to my notes again, so don't miss the important things that we may need down the road. We're going to rehabilitate the site, which we feel is needed redevelopment. The property contains a 10-year-old, 37-quarter-foot-high structure, the 34 bedrooms, and about 68-person legal occupancy. Clear place with six condominiums and two buildings. The proposed use will require approval of the use variance from the board, as well as associated sea variances proposed. And as mentioned before, a D for far. Talk about the site plan that we prepared in response to both the client's provisional and the borough engineer's comments. We will require exceeding corridor ratio of 117 percent, the building coverage of 52.4 percent.
How many percent?
117. The maximum building coverage of 52.4, block coverage of 60 percent, a five-foot front stepback on River Avenue, and a five-and-a-half-foot stepback at the rear of the property, West Lee Crocker Line. And a variance waiver from the RSAS parking standard to a F12. On-site spaces where 14 are required.
Excuse me, Mr. Kennedy, when he's done, where do we go with this?
When he is done.
Do we get the rebuttal from the attorney?
Well, yes, when he's finished his planning testimony, presumably, Mr. Brodsky is going to cross-examine him.
I think Kennedy's pretty good at that.
Yeah. And then we'll ask.
Watch the clock.
Yeah, and we'll ask, and Tim Middleton will also have the opportunity to cross-examine if he wants, but I don't know if he will.
Will the audience talk after that?
Uh, maybe not tonight. They will at some point, at some point be able to ask them questions and to make comments. I don't know if that's tonight.
Does change, we might not vote on this application, do you think?
I would tend to think that we're getting close to the chairman's witching hour. So I would tend to think not, in fact, that's my opinion.
I appreciate that.
I apologize.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay, so continuing. I reviewed the August 2016 master plan reexamination report and update. It identifies and examines the major problems and objectives related to land development in the borough. It's the most current realization of the borough's vision and what it anticipates as the future of the borough. The report examines problems associated with the existing structure and use, existing impacts to surrounding properties, the layout of the property, the beneficial impacts, special reasons for granting the use variance. Also want to demonstrate that the master plan advances and benefits of the public good associated with the project. There are no significant negative impacts associated with the use improvement, and the lot is particularly suitable for the proposed use. I'd reference in my.
Break those down, if you would, since that is what I believe is going to be the thrust of discussion here and after, and perhaps other courts. I want a clear foundation, a clear test of law, notwithstanding the hour being. So. Go ahead.
So the reports that we referenced, the master plan adopted in December of 1989, the reexamination report in the year 2000, the reported update in 2006, the reported update in, oh, it was in 2016, the most current one, New Jersey State Development, the redevelopment plan of March 2001, and the draft New Jersey State Development and Redevelopment Plan of 2012. So I can categorize the next section as talking about problems associated with the existing building and its use. So the property in question contains an aging, century-old residential structure, which we know as the White House Hotel, that has 34 bedrooms. Use as an hotel is non-conforming in the R75 zone. The existing building is located on the West Lee Crocker Line, zero feet, and violates both front yard stepback and front porch stepback. The structure exceeds the height limitation in the zone. And the legal occupancy of the hotel is 68 people, two per room. No onsite parking is provided for the hotel guests or any employees of the hotel. The structure is composed of several building additions over the years, showing signs of substantial deferred maintenance and repair. Lacks heat in many areas of the building. Structure is approaching its useful life and soon will require major investment and renovation for the use to successfully continue its operation. A redevelopment of the site with the old proper use that will not change the character of the neighborhood more to conform with the master plan goals. While still providing benefits associated with a more dense and affordable residential opportunity is needed at this location. The surrounding area of the site, we talked about exhibit, what's this, A16? Can the board detect that? The surrounding area was described with a yellow color as multifamily condominiums, which have densities in excess of 30 units per acre, some as high as 40. Our proposed density is 18 units per acre, six units on 15,025 square feet. We get back to the 2016 reexamination plan, the master plan of the borough.
I'm sorry, which plan?
2016.
Thank you.
In section four of that plan, it talks about the extent of significant changes in assumptions, policies, and objectives. While the borough population is fluctuating, it's actually decreasing. North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority forecasted a population increase, which has not been met. Population is also aging drastically, going from a median age of 38.4 in 2010 to median age of 24.2 in 2014. The housing portion also identifies a substantial decrease in multifamily units between the years 2010 and 2014, as shown on payable six, page 33 of the report. Specifically, the housing tax between five to nine units per structure decreased by 21 units. From 134 units, 213 units. It represents now only 2.8 percent of the housing stock. The 21-unit decrease is substantial, 15.6 percent decrease over the four years, which accounts for much of the super storm standing reconstruction period. Those units, the five to nine units per structure, provide a mix of housing opportunities, which can be more affordable than a single-family capacity, which is more predominant throughout the borough. More than 64 percent of the land in the borough is occupied by single-family uses. Less than 3 percent is set aside for multifamily support for condominiums. The age of housing identified in the 2016 reexamination report is remarkable, with approximately 83.6 percent of the housing stock being built prior to 1979, and 35 percent being built prior to 1939. This hotel has been around since the turn of the century, previous century.
Excuse me, Mr. Kennedy, what is the relevance here in this report?
Well, this is a use variance application.
Right.
Per New Jersey law, it's a high standard. And this is, and the standards are typically achieved through testimony from the professional witnesses and including a professional planner.
Right.
Mr. Shipers is setting forth the testimony that he wants his planners to bring. And what ultimately, and I'm going to cut to the chase, and I'm going to assume what I think is going on, is this is the foundation of the planning testimony that's going to be presented, in which Mr. DeFalco is going to say on behalf of the applicant, these are all the reasons why he thinks that you can grant the variance relief, even though it's not specifically permitted.
Right.
And this is just the way that this is done. This is the legally recognized way that it's done. And it's the way that would be subject to your review and the review of the objectors and review of the public. So I think it is, it is, I understand your concerns with maybe the timing and stuff, but it is relevant and it is important that we, you know, for the record, we give Mr. Shipers and his team the opportunity to try and convince you and the public that this is a good application. Likewise, we're going to give Mr. Brodsky and his team an opportunity to say why they believe it's not a good application.
Right.
So I think we just do have to, I understand your sensitivity to the times.
I think everyone is sensitive.
Right.
Everyone wants to speak it up here.
But I think, no, no, I.
I support what Mr. Fowler is saying, Mr. Brodsky. I just think we have a filibuster in terms of the amount of time that's being spent. I mean, we need to kind of make efficient use of our new audience's time, so we need to speed this thing up a little bit.
And can I just ask, what's the difference from what was testified last time to now? Because as you keep going through, and I get the idea of us, you know, hearing it over and over again, and we'll get it, but I'm looking at what was the criteria last time, criteria seems to be the same unless I'm wrong
Right.
with the variances.
And the trial. I did this trial yesterday, it was my first night.
No, no, but I'm saying, other folks did, and you're repeating, you know, a lot of the variance information as a engineer and a planner, which, you know, maybe the way it's done.
With the utmost respect to the chair, the board, and the public, I think Mr. Kennedy, I think Mr. Brodsky will agree that expert testimony in a light that we review, not only by you, but if there's an appeal, to Freehold.
Right.
And what we are trying to do, Mr. Fowler, I appreciate every moment, and Mr. Fitzgerald, I appreciate every moment of your concern to that. If I don't put in sufficient planning testimony,
Right.
Mr. Brodsky's going to try to tear Mr. DeFalco apart for not putting it in as a planner and making his conclusions. And if we were so lucky to have an affirmative vote, and Mr. Brodsky takes it to Freehold, but I didn't put this in, then we get what's called a remand back. And a remand back is we sit here again and do a lot of it over again because I didn't do my job putting my planner on, and then the other additional witnesses.
Right.
So with the utmost respect for every one of you, the time of the day, Christmas time, and candidly, if we all have, the board has had enough at 9:30, I will break at 9:30, you can continue. But what I will not do is prejudice the rights of my client,
Right.
nor subject this board to review by a higher authority, saying this board didn't look closely. They didn't take the time to listen to all the affirmative testimony, analysis of detriment, negative criteria versus positive criteria. Didn't hear appropriately from the planners. They weren't subject to significant and sufficient cross-examination, and we all don't want to do this again. So I'm going to defer a little bit to Mr. Vesto, because what I don't want to do, I'm getting a flavor that perhaps because it's December 20th, or whatever hour of the day, that you'd like me to move quicker. I'm trying to move quicker, but I will not prejudice my clients. And I don't want to put this word in a position they'd rather move this along if tonight's not the night. I know it's December 20th, but I have to do what I must do. I think Mr. Kennedy would prefer.
You can go, Mr. Kennedy?
I do, and, 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 like I, I understand what your concerns are. And I guess I would just say, in somewhat of a trying to be somewhat funny and trying to be somewhat serious, democracy and the democratic process isn't always real pretty. And the legal process isn't always real pretty. But I do believe that if, at the end of the day, this application is, whether it's approved or whether it's denied, if there's an appeal, and let's be frank,
Right.
a lot of people in the room with suits that are going to maybe appeal, I think that if the testimony is not there to justify your decision, the board's decision, whatever that decision is going to be, is going to be subject to attack and subject to reversal and subject to remand. So I understand where you're coming from, and I understand, I think it's a lesson that, you know, witnesses may be not be thorough, but not necessarily overly repetitive. And we're going to have that same comments for the public too. But we do, in this legal process that we do have, within reason, and within the bounds of acceptability, and within the bounds of evidence, rules of evidence, we do need to let the applicants proceed and bring their case on. And likewise, you're probably going to have the same questions and concerns when we go through the other, the objectors' witnesses, but that's, this is unfortunately or fortunately the norm. But I do think that the lesson is, we don't need to be overly repetitive, and I think that is kind of fair.
Right, and I think we should note that December 20th has nothing to do with what's transpiring. It could be, it could be January, it could be February, it could be March. There's still be some concerns about, as Mr. Kennedy said, the repetitiveness of what's transpiring, and we understand legally that you need to cover all your bases, which is why he's writing that down. I apologize for interrupting you.
And, Mr. Fowler, I apologize if I gave you the impression.
Why?
I think I might have perhaps, well, maybe December 20th wasn't the most opportune date, but it's our day, so.
Right.
We're going to work with it, but.
Okay. My dookie's a boy tonight.
All right, is there anybody up here who can't hear this application until 10 o'clock tonight? Pretty much what we're all up for tonight, if that works for anyone. Oh, yeah, actually, I was going to take a, we'll take a 10-minute break right now. Use the restroom, we'll be back here at at 9:20, I think. All right, everybody, we're back on record here. Should we roll call again? Here.
Here.
I think I'm here, I'm not exactly sure.
Welcome back, Mr. Shakers, we were here for you and Mr. DeFalco.
Thank you, I guess Mr. Fowler will pick up where you have.
So briefly, the historic arrow shows this house in approximately the 1900s era, the White House Hotel. The borough has the limited large areas in the borough, and there you need a redevelopment, including the Seaport Zone and Main Street area.
I need to, could you just speak up a little bit?
Speak up a little bit. Slow down, Mr. Vesto.
I don't want to get myself in trouble.
The borough has limited large areas as redevelopment, needed redevelopment, including the Seaport Redevelopment Zone and Main Street area. Aging housing stock records in the master plan, and in this case, the age of this structure, which is 100-plus years. The structure has basically used its useful life, whereby rehabilitation is the next step for the area. The master plan, the reexamination report was on to say that The master plan, the reexamination report was on to say that the median household income in the borough has also dropped from $61,000 a year to $59,000 a year. The 2016 reexamination report determined that despite in median family income, coupled with a decline in the median household income, may be the result of a number of local, regional, and national policies and trends. One possible reason may be the conversion of multi-family structures along Long Ocean Avenue into single-family structures. Simultaneously, there have been a few redevelopment projects along Main Street and Central Belmar with high-end apartments, both of which attract affluent residents. South end of Belmar has had many homes converted or rebuilt from summer rentals to larger year-round residences. It has declined in seasonal housing units with more year-round residence and high-end second homes, which require residents that have higher incomes.
How is that relevant to your planning testimony as to why this is an appropriate project to fill those voids or gaps?
Well, the high-end apartments will tend to attract more affluent residents and with more pride of ownership, the residency, the homes, the values, the ratables, support of the downtown by these residents supporting the improvements along Main Street will aid in improvement to the borough in general.
So that testimony, does that correlate with your understanding of case, where that pure finances alone may not be enough, but coupled with other special reasons, is a positive for this project?
Yes, the bringing in of the residents that would afford these condominiums will be a positive for the borough.
Continue.
I'll talk about building height and parking briefly. The 2016 reexamination report, although it's rather solid on building height throughout the borough, talks about priorities since Hurricane Sandy. And it talks about, along with the updated VFEs, the baseball elevations, post-Sandy re-instruction has resulted in most buildings being elevated on filings at varying heights. Inciting new design challenges and the need to be addressed in the Borough zoning code and design standard. The borough participates in the National Flood Assurance Program, community rating system, and enforces codes and ordinances regarding the same. The borough has adopted in 2013 a flood map and has adopted modifications to the residential home height ordinances to encourage home elevation. Old building regulations pertaining to wind, flood, and hurricane are enforced by the public. Although the property in question is not in a flood hazard area and is not anticipated to be affected by sea level rise, however, the trend throughout the county, the borough, and New Jersey Shore is in the lack of consistent taller buildings and parking beneath structures. Reality of providing parking in short areas which are already substantially developed while elevating living areas to provide safety from flood combined, so that parking beneath living areas obstructs customary, safe, and desirable.
That's coming out of the 2016 master plan review draft.
That's inferred from that, that is correct. The master plan contemplates this necessity and identifies that audiences have been altered in an effort to encourage development that is free from the dangers of flood and accordingly allow for ground parking below living areas. And that's page 50 in the reexamination report. The added benefit of this includes maximization of efficiencies of space, increasing parking opportunities where none currently exist, and compliance with the needs of the disabled for designs that permit elevator access to a ground floor.
So are you gonna tie the elevator up?
They each have an elevator, yes. The only obvious disadvantage of this trend is increased height of structures and the impact to air, light, and open space. The 2016 reexam is also citing the need for parking in multi-family structures, with the exception of discussing changing the parking standards to conform to the residential site equipment standards. RSAS accepts alternative parking standards that better reflect local conditions and would classify reducing the minimum number of parking spaces as de minimis under NJAC 521-3.1. All residential development in the state of New Jersey is governed by the residential site equipment standards. While the application lists a need for parking waiver, 12 onsite spaces proposed, there are 48 spaces adjacent on the site frontage along the north and south sides of River Avenue to accommodate guest parking. To reiterate, the distinct site has no onsite parking. The proposed development, the applicant proposes to remove existing 34-unit rooms, 68 occupancy hotels, and construct a six-unit multi-family unit. Those are one, two-bedroom units, five, three-bedroom units. The average owner occupied household size in 2014 was 2.05 people per dwelling, which equates to a projected occupancy rate of 12.3 people for the disconstruction. The proposed structure will consist of a two-car garage, parking level on ground door, with two and a half stories of residential floor above. Again, at the ground level, would also be proposed as shown on the architect plan. The architecture is designed so that the buildings appear as individual homes when viewed to be the Second Avenue or River Avenue. The structure will require relief from the building height requirement, the three and a half stories, and 38.42 feet is proposed. Whereby two and a half stories and 35 feet are the maximum permitted.
Do you have an opinion based upon positive criteria aesthetically, when you mentioned it will appear as two houses from each of the roads compared to the existing structure? Whether you feel that is a substantial benefit to the aesthetic component of the north end of town in this area in particular?
Yes, I believe that looking at two individual structures is a benefit from the one larger structure which could have been placed on the site. I think Ms. Hearn testified earlier that she had the option to have one large structure, chose to break it in half and place the driveway between them so that it would appear as two structures from each street. And it'll be a benefit to the neighborhood and the elevation speak for themselves as far as the architectural union that she's trying to gather from this plan. The proposed project provides an increase of six units in available units in the borough's multi-family, top-line unit structure category, Table 6 of the 2016 reexam report, providing more availability in the multifamily market while also providing year-round housing opportunities, which the current hotel does not.
Do you find that that's a substantial benefit to the area versus what's currently existing there?
Yes, in my opinion, having a year-round resident which will support the borough throughout the entire year versus from May to September is a benefit to the borough, having a full-time resident on the site all year long.
Do you have an opinion of, to be simple, a single owner's ownership of units versus the tendency one would have with a 34-unit rooming house and their transient nature from a benefit perspective for this area in the case?
Yeah, I mean, you get people that live in the town, that have a home in the town, that have pride of ownership, that maintain their property versus it could be a day rental, a week rental, a monthly rental, a seasonal rental person at the hotels. You can have a different perspective or attitude towards the borough if you want the people that are gonna be there full-time, 24/7, all year long.
Continue, please.
So this project will provide more availability in the multifamily market while providing year-round housing opportunities. The new construction with modern materials will be more visually appealing than the present aging structure. That will benefit the surrounding area, the population, and the housing stock.
Do you have an opinion, perhaps even from a fire perspective, based upon the age of the existing structure, its location on the property line adjacent to the two, I'll call them, you know, chapter homes to the west, to benefit of new construction five feet to the east versus where this old building exists on the property line, and whether you feel that's a benefit to not only the site, but to the neighbors to the west?
I believe that having a new construction, which we call the standard fire code of today, is far better than what is existing today at the property line, relative to its materials, and it's probably not up to the same fire code that a new structure would be. In the proximity of the buildings to the property line, the wind coming off the ocean could have caused damage to adjacent homes easier today than it would if it was set back further and treated properly for such an event.
So the new structure would minimize or mitigate potential widespread risk to the Westbury project?
I believe it would be a better situation, yes.
Thank you, continue.
So peculiar and unique circumstances exist at the site, there's no on-street parking exists to service a hotel. Under current standards, the hotel would require between one and 1.8 parking stalls per unit. They have one or two people per unit that would require between 34 to 61 parking spaces onsite where none exist. Our proposal for six units requires 14 spaces, but while there is a deficit in the parking to provide 12 spaces, I should reduce the current deficit from existing.
So doing the math, our project would be two deficit versus what we're just there, now is about 31 to 60?
31 to 61 deficit versus two deficit.
Thank you, continue.
A substantial decrease in parking promotes purposes zoning by increasing available parking onsite, decreasing offsite availability by servicing vehicles with previously parked offsite, and provide a safe, efficient area for residents to park. The then approved provision of two-stall per unit is a benefit to the neighborhood and the borough. Removal of the non-performing hotel from the property and replacement with year-round residential structures will have a positive impact on the tax base as new construction development should provide an exponential increase in tax revenue to the borough. Permanent residency, coupled with pride of ownership and less parking demand, will have a substantial benefit on the neighborhood and the borough. Collated building, housing substantial, I'm sorry, collated buildings which have substantial age as the main factor need to be replaced over time. This project will lead to an increased property value of the neighborhood and improvement to the general area. Increasing the value of this plan will strengthen the real estate market for residents in the area. Strong real estate market also strengthens the local business, as I mentioned before. Local shops, restaurants will be benefited by year-round use of the residence. The site will be compliant with the American Visibility Act, allowing access to all floors from the garage parking level. Master plan goal was modified recently to ensure compliance with ADA regulations. In examining the 2016 report again, reference to the 2,000 master plan goals were made, which include to generate alternative land strategies to return under new lives or follow commercial land to tax productive role within the borough while providing compatibility with surrounding land uses. The removal of this site, a non-performing commercial use, and replacing it with year-round residence and multifamily housing will allow the site to return to a more tax productive role as a new development should provide an increase in tax revenue. References in that report of 2016 talk about Seaport redevelopment plan. Although we're not in the Seaport redevelopment area, which generally consists of commercial properties in the west of the area of the borough along the railroad, the plan is revealing as to what the municipality envisions as appropriate for future development of the borough and is instructive as to whether enhancements are appropriate and what constraints the municipality feel necessary when we develop aging structures and properties. So with consulting that redevelopment plan as it relates to this project. The Seaport plan proposed mixed-use facilities with commercial units, of course, with much of the focus of the discussion is the plan, upon the aspects of the plan area which is not purpose for this discussion. However, the upper story residential is central to the redevelopment of areas that need redevelopment. The upper floors of buildings offer residential purposes, the plan states. It specifies that buildings ought to be three and a half stories, with the upper two and a half stories utilized for residential units. So the Seaport plan envisions at Golden Belmar for building heights are increased to allow first floor commercial or parking below. Given the building requirements of the Seaport zone, it prevents buildings of three and a half stories and 45 feet maximum height where they can eliminate parking. More importantly, in addition, the plan identifies, this is the borough plan, the floor-carrier ratio shall not apply where developers provide enclosed parking onsite or at least all reserved parking spaces for residential units. That's important because we have a floor-carrier ratio variance, but on the other side of town, the borough waves the parking ratio when you provide parking in a garage underneath the residential portion. The maximum height of the eve of a three-story building shall not exceed 39 feet 6 inches, and the average height of the roof between the eve and the peak shall not exceed 46 feet. So portions of the borough have recognized the fact that building the garage at grade level and residential above necessitates the height of the structures to be taller than the 35 feet. As Mary Hearn explained on Long Ocean Avenue, the borough has already recognized that and typically, shortage lots on Ocean Avenue of 38 and a half feet high on the new construction. Although not described in the plan, it's inferred that the borough recognizes the benefits and impact of providing onsite and theory parking reserved for residential units. This benefits the neighborhood and borough provides a substantially better planning alternative than construction at grade and inside parking. The plan recognizes an increase in building height and weight of floor ratio as reasonable support to facilitate redevelopment in the borough. The state master plan, called the State Development and Redevelopment Plan, focuses Belmar and Planning Area 1, the left of Park and Planning Area. Development of this site serves the plan goals of redirecting... Development of this site serves the plan goals of redirecting population to urban areas where infrastructure and services already exist. In the Metro Park and Planning Area, the state's goals and intention include provide for much of the state's future redevelopment, promote growth in compact forms, and upgrade and expand housing to attract balanced residential populations. The draft state plan includes Planning Area 1 and the priority growth investment area, which is an area where more suburban development and redevelopment is preferred and where public and private inhabitants support such development and redevelopment will be prioritized. The proposed development promotes the general welfare by advancing the goals of the State Development and Redevelopment Plan and Draft State Plan. With regard to special reasons for this site, these variants would be approved. The municipal land use law under category A states that one of the holes of the planning is to encourage municipal action to guide the proper use of development of all land in the state in a manner which promotes public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. The promotion of the general welfare is a special reason for the grant of a use variance. The use promotes the general welfare because the site is particularly suited for the use according to Price versus Himijai and the Union City Board of-
Price versus what?
And Union City Board of Adjustment, A-46-11, New Jersey Supreme Court. In that case, the court concluded that the particular suitability is a more flexible concept. Said the meaning should not be interpreted too narrowly and had stated making that by using a fact in site-specific approach. The court in that case found that the property was in fact particularly suited for the proposed use and the board's decision was entitled to deference. In this case, the specific site which presently houses the White House Hotel at the property location. The opportunity to remove the White House Hotel and replace it with a less intense use, which would enhance the neighborhood, bring additional revenue to the borough by way of increased taxes, and by providing year-round residence supported of down-down businesses and the transit system is proposed. The proposed development will promote the general welfare by advancing the goals of the State Redvelopment Plan and Draft State Plan. The site historically has been occupied by 34 to 68 persons on a regular basis. Therefore, they're gaining any impact to make, quote, in development. The property is well suited for the proposed development because the site is surrounded by existing multifamily uses. The location within the first block from the ocean makes the location desirable and well-suited for its proposed occupants who will be able to reside in close proximity to the major draw of the area, the ocean. There are a number of existing residential buildings of similar height which are near the parcel on which the property is built, based on the grant of a use variance. The building to be demolished is only 15 inches lower than the proposed building. Therefore, the new height is not significant change to the present height condition of the site. In comparison to both the Ennis of your 75 zone, the property was a ring on the point because it had developed as a hotel and violates many setback requirements. The property at 15,025 square feet in area is oversized for the zone and oversized in comparison to nearby parcels. The project is consistent with the borough master plan for redevelopment projects where setbacks are diminished at grade, covered parking is encouraged, and residential development over the parking level is now the norm. The property location is specifically and particularly well suited for the proposed development because the property contains a large aging building with non-performing use and the development of the site creates the opportunity to have it removed from the neighborhood. The demolition of the building at this location will remove the hotel and its non-performing use. Replace the old building with a modern structure with proper fire protection, flood protection, heat, air conditioning, and onsite parking will promote the general welfare. Other special reasons to support the grant of a use variance is they also promote the purposes of planning from the MLUL or category B to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural, man-made disasters. As mentioned, the proposed building would be properly fire suppressed, properly elevated above flood elevations to meet this intent and purpose. Under category C, to provide adequate light, air, and open space. The elevated building proposed provides adequate air circulation and the oversized lot tends to mitigate minimal impact to light and open space. Borough right-of-way areas are adjacent to the site to the north, to the east, to the south, which will again supplement these benefits. Under category E, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions. The six-unit project enables the elimination of a 34-unit aging structure from the neighborhood by removing the White House Hotel, its use, and the demand displayed upon the borough. Under category G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate occasions for a variety of residential uses according to their respective requirements to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. The master plan identifies negative trends in the housing market that will be reversed prior to construction of the proposed project. Proposed condominiums will offer an alternative housing choice on more and creates an affordable housing option. Under category R, to create a favorable visual environment through creative development technique and good civic design and arrangement. The project eliminates a central building which has exceeded the useful life, removes a pre-existing non-performing unit in the future from the site, and constructs a visually appealing building that will be an enhancement to the neighborhood. The site is particularly suited for the proposed purpose and especially well suited for the use in spite of the fact that it is not permitted in the zone. The site can accommodate any problems associated with the use and the seaport bearings are requested, if granted, advance the purpose of the municipal land use law and create benefits that outweigh any detriment caused by degrading from the ordinance. The board would be considering this use variance should consider the overall site design as a result that the sea variances are subsumed in the devariance. It means that we have a use, if you approve the use, what goes with it is the height, the floor, the setbacks, and all of the things that we are a variance to. The project is proposed to replace the hotel as a condominium building. And that building, as Mr. Schreiber said, has a five-foot rear setback, has a five-foot street setback, has a 37 and 5-inch height. Those things are the application we're forced. And if the use is to the board's liking, those other things come with that, the six units and the parking in the garage. As opposed to the negative criteria, the site relief and variance relief can be granted and not result in substantial detriment to the public for the following reasons. The site provides adequate off-street parking and will conform to the character of the neighborhood because it is similar in height to existing buildings and neighboring structures that will not detriment to the impact light and open space. Increased car setbacks are provided to adjacent residential usage to the west. At Pudon Street Parking and River Avenue is also available as the parking demand from the existing hotel of 34 feet plus 40 feet is being replaced with a much, much smaller parking demand from six condominium units that will provide 12 onsite parking spaces. With regard to traffic, the use is a low-traffic generator and onsite parking is proposed. With respect to noise, this year-round residential use will not be a substantial generator of noise. In respect to reduction in air light and open space, ground-level side setbacks are increased and there is not a substantial increase in light and open space due to the proposed building size, placement, and height. With regard to smaller runoff, the plan provides for the installation of paved walkways, driveways, and underground storage and infiltration runoff and landscape areas that will mitigate the slight increase in site runoff associated with increased impervious areas. The unique existing building located on the site, 100-year-old hotel, will be eliminated along with its non-performing use and aging condition on the neighborhood. The project will reduce the need for onsite parking by proposing a use that has less parking demand than what currently exists on the site. There will be a reduction in the number of units from 34 to 6, thereby reducing the intensity of the use. The density of the existing site is 99 units per acre. The proposed density is 18 units per acre. There is a reduction in the demand for on-street parking, thereby increasing available parking for other uses. The project will be geared toward dual-incommodities, professional contractors, and hires which result in a decrease in median income level in the borough and will also result in a low amount of school-aged children, thereby not governing the local school system. There will be a reduction in noise, thereby creating a quieter environment. The project will bring six permanent residences to the area to increase local business, decrease crime, add market value to the neighborhood, and increase the borough's tax revenue. The building height is 15 inches higher than the present roof height and is not a substantial change in the existing condition. Other existing newly constructed residential buildings within close proximity of the site approach 40 feet at a proposed height of 38 feet 5 inches is not substantially out of par with the neighborhood. The project will bring new construction to the area and remove the 100-year-old structure which has surpassed some useful life. The proposed used structure can be accommodated by the parcel that at first did impact in the overall neighborhood and load and steam. In terms of consistency with the master plan, the zone plan, and zoning ordinance, the project will not substantially impair the intense purpose of the zone plan, zoning ordinance, for the following reasons. The Bell Mall is a built-out community and the majority of new house housing results from redevelopment of parcels as opposed to the development of vacant parcels. A site-specific approach is appropriate in this case because the board's peculiar knowledge of local conditions and several goals of the master plan will be served by the proposed development.
Would that be a kind of appropriate time to break at 10 o'clock? Oh, immersed.
You still have how many more sheets that you need to read?
Three.
Three? Last time somebody read me that much, I was listening to Winnie the Pooh. Third grade. How are we all done?
How about?
We're at 10 o'clock right now.
Exactly. And I'm sorry, what were you saying, Mr. Schreiber?
I was saying that I think it would be an appropriate time on that last sentence to wish everyone a happy new year.
So I'm just curious from protocol procedure, Mr. Schenker. When we reschedule this next meeting, I guess we pick up off of the pre-CTS list to read?
Yes, sir.
And then we have cross-examination?
Yes, sir.
And then what happens after that, Ford?
We either have, depending on the, either Ford, I'm sorry, either public questions or, and then we go to the next speakers. Mr. Schreiber, do you have any sort of witnesses?
There may be a brief assessor, a little assessor test.
And then just for the record, not that we're holding anyone to this, Mr. Brodsky, you have how many witnesses?
I have one, maybe two.
Okay. And that would be a planner on the summit?
I have my professional planner who's here at the beginning and I may bring him in, appraisers.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
A real estate appraiser?
Okay.
And the planner?
Yeah, I've seen him in the last session.
I'm sorry?
I've seen him in the last session, I'm sure he's anxious to talk.
Was that it, Mr. Fowler?
For now, I guess.
All right. Do we have a date picked out for the next, the next available hearing?
And we don't have to notify the, they don't have to notify the, uh?
No, we'll not pre-notice if we establish a date, sorry.
We have two applications right now for January 24th.
Is it one in the Bell Mall?
We have a chat and application that's on January 24th.
Right.
And then we have February 28th is an option.
When's the Bell Mall in?
It has no date at this time.
Oh, I thought it was in January initial. Not anymore? Okay.
All right, well, I guess it's logical to move it to January's meeting. Do you hear the captain?
We just have, so we just have two on paper so far.
That's right.
January.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I actually, I actually have a hearing in another town on that night on the 24th of January.
Okay, what's the next, what's the?
February? Will your planner be accessible?
I'm hoping. January. January 28th, we'll work.
Mr. Schreiber's December.
I want to call Mr. Kishuba, who is an expert, and Mr. Middleton as well. Mr. Kishuba is the planner for the supporter group of the application who are in the audience and is represented by Mr. Middleton. So you have two more planners to go, Mr. Fowler.
Well, thank you so much.
I figured you'd say that.
I figured the World Series would be able to wait. And vote on it. Olympic.
You're the better world champion, I'm the world star.
What is the Olympics?
You were at it.
I'm trained. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Merkler indicated that, and Miss Merkler is willing to pay for the special session. Mr. Merkler would be willing to pay for a special session in January if the board so chose to try to continue this along to accommodate Mr. Brodsky's other engagements.
Just, just board, have any feeling about a special meeting?
I know my man over there always has a little opposition to one to your right, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chairman, he's mentioned before about the special meeting thing. How do you feel about that?
I'm not opposed to a special meeting myself. I would like to get through these applications. But I want to vote on this board.
I agree with you.
I agree with you.
You agree with mine?
Sure. Six. Mr. Fowler?
I need to know today, we're considering the special meeting.
Is that acceptable to you, April and Kevin?
There's 10 billion in town. I need to watch him sleep while we're here, please.
But I can go on Friday night.
Okay.
For the special meeting.
Availability of the room and Kevin's sample, so I'm not going to pick it up tonight.
But theoretically, it'd be, it'd be the week before January 24th, right? Like it'd be January 17th or whatever.
Yeah, 17th and 18th.
Give or take.
How will the public know of that? But I know their anxious to be here. My intent is not to necessarily pre-notice, so through that energy.
There's no way, right? You'd have to be pre-noticed.
Yeah, I mean, and two things too. Obviously, January, first week of January, the utilization of the municipality, I don't know if there's going to be U-Board members and things like that. So, should we?
Let's hear it, come on.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, what happened to the February date? Does that rule that? I'm having, I'm having problems with January 17th.
Right.
February 28th is the date.
I don't need to a regular meeting though. Exactly. He's saying that he would, he has no problem with special sessions, but obviously there's a point of conflict with all of this standard monthly gathering.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand that.
But if possible.
Right.
Well, the meeting can't be picked, the meeting date can't be picked tonight, so you'd be left with the requirement to notice again. If we do pick a meeting in January or February, or just go to February 28th.
All right, one of my issues is, I will be out of town tomorrow. I will be out of state tomorrow for the fifth, so if I'm coming back, I have to renotice and I have to get 10 days' notice plus publication of it. You know, sort of putting us towards the end of January, which I'm more happy to, but I don't think that would accommodate a date unless I close out, call my law partner. Perhaps I can close that on the other day, but I think I'd be that day from
All right, well, how many applications are on February 28th?
Not right now. I have two applications that are waiting for a date, so depending on what we do tonight, what we turn on, what we start on.
Mr. Chairman, just a thought, and I know Mr. Merkler and Mr. Schreiber have time sensitivities. What about if we carry it February 28th, we'll be understanding that they're gonna be the, presumably the only application on and we could, in between now and then, have a, you know, April poll everyone for a special meeting date in March so that we would have all the dates when we carry it February 28th, and if you didn't get it done, we consent to have a March special meeting. I'm just thinking aloud.
I think that's a great plan, Mr. Schenckley.
Mr. Merkler's throwing out January 31st as well. What date does that affect the takers and such as well?
We don't know and there's, we're not gonna be able to pick it tonight because there's a lot of different moving parts.
We'll give you time and notice. I could hustle for that date. You know, I'll be back at time, and we obviously will be open after the New Year, but renotice. Or if I knew it was a date, well, we can't.
I would, I would rather at this point, put it on February 28th with the intention of a special meeting in March if we need one. We would come to the table with
February 1st was February 28th.
Is that 28th, did I get that right? February 28th.
And that way, April can hold board members so that if it doesn't finish February 28th, we can, we'll do have the finished special meetings in March and we'll know the dates.
All right, well, hypothetically, if thinking aloud, the possibility of any new board members in the new year, they would be required to listen to tapes?
Yes.
Good.
That's a good one.
Welcome to the board.
All right, so this application is carried.
Yes, so for ladies and gentlemen, the public, and I very much appreciate the good members of the public who are here and are getting anxious to speak as well. We're gonna carry this meeting, February 28th, 2019, 7:00 PM, without any, any public notice. Mr. Schreiber, you will be asked to your point and sent to instead of the timeframe of this, you will have that. Okay, and then just closing, two things. Frank Brodsky, I believe you, you have actual transcripts of the
Oh, okay.
You'll see it next time.
I could send you the link.
I'll, I'll find it.
Yeah, I'll find it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.